This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
My apologies, completely counsel Denham, I should have done that.
Want me to repeat? I can give a condensed.
Can you do a condensed version because we weren't recording, I apologize.
Sure, yep, so I just wanted to say that I'm not gonna support this change. Specifically, I'm not gonna support this because I feel as though this is going to be more of a deterrent for people to participate. I think it's going to be, it's going to potentially empower members of this body to be able to, of city council, to be able to make cases against individuals. And I believe that that 45 days is ample time for that to be able to make that case. There are processes already in place that would allow the city council to call an emergency meeting if something was known. And I think what was mentioned also, and I didn't say this before, was if this was designated for the summertime, I think this is about access. And I don't think changing it to 60 days as a convenience to members of the council is the priority. I think it's about making it accessible and not creating deterrence for people to participate. And I think if people know that people are going to be looking for a reason to not have them participate, I think that that's going to, I think they're not going to want to do that. And I think the other piece that I just want to say was, there was conversation about this isn't the intent of that. But I think we always have to look at what is the impact that this potentially could have. And I think other represented people, women, particularly women of color, are the ones who are going to be most impacted by this.
Counselor Dumas, thank you. I mean, a quick answer to this, I would agree everything with Counselor Denham said. You want to, or they agree with her. I know that I proposed this with Counselor Savitt. When we, when I said that with Counselor Savitt, the concern was what happened a couple of months ago when we would have forum and we have to move up the meeting, the appointments meeting. And then was no recommendation for the committee to appoint someone. And there was, if we didn't move that line and we will have to wait for the next meeting, that person will be automatically be appointed by the charter, by the rules on the charter. Like, that was the concern. After multiple conversation with Counselor Denham, I do agree with what she said. I do agree, it's 100%. And I think the charter allows us to call an emergency meeting if we have to have an emergency meeting to deal with appointments.
You mean prior to the 45?
Prior to 45 days, yeah. I think the charter allows to do that if it is necessary. I will take the words that you said, you being here for 27 years, and this only happened twice.
Twice where we rejected.
We rejected, yeah, but no big issues with the 45 days, right?
No, and to be honest with you, I'm surprised that appointment problem, because 45 days during the regular year is three meetings. But how did we miss that?
And I, I'm happy.
You get it, Ed.
So, so what's happening here is that appointments made by the mayor following the date that's filed with me. So like, I have, sometimes I will get an appointment from the mayor, like, early. So it'll be dated, like, the one that's on your agenda right now.
And I think that's the only thing that probably we should change is the day start when the agenda go out.
Well, if they.
If we can do somebody that.
She could date the, if they could date the appointment paperwork. Like, if you were to look at today's agenda, there's an appointment that I've had for like a week. And, you know, I couldn't do anything. I got it maybe the day after the last meeting, so it's already like two weeks.
But again, with that, we haven't had a problem.
But in the summertime, if I got one, say, right after the June, say I got one like, like at the end of May, and it missed getting on the June agenda, then it's gotta go all the way to June to get on the July agenda. And then it won't be acted on until August. See, so you.
You lose the 45 days.
Yeah, because, and that's only because when I get an appointment.
Can we, you have a question, can we, can we say like the first day, at this first reading of the full council?
Well, we put it in the charter.
See, it says was filed with the clerk of the council.
Where does it say that?
Right at the second, keep on scrolling it up.
Yes, what are you doing?
No, no, down first, the next, what is your suggestion? Following the date on which the notice.
Instead of file with the clerk of the council, we say appears has been read at an agenda. And I, the first, the first reading, the date is referred to committee. We can do that, and then we resolve the problem. So, there's two things that brings this to mind. In the summer especially, that scenario she just said meant we wouldn't be able to vote on it. If it came in the day after our meeting with this charter. Now, again, we haven't had anybody that, we used to be 30 days, which said, well, we never could do it. But even in that scenario, we would have to have a special meeting to be able to vote on that, right? Counselor Gomez.
And just want to finish my statement about why I changed my mind too. I'm really concerned that some future counselors, if it happened, target people of color, target women, target someone for their religion, and that is the biggest concern now. Because the authority that we have is to reject them. So if that person is gonna try and define something to reject that person. So they're trying to find something negative about that person. And if we couldn't find it in 45 days, why you need extra?
Well, and the other thing that I thought of, when I thought of this, is these are mayoral appointments. Mostly volunteers to committee, mostly. And let's take the CRC, which is the last five members. If we, if it stayed at 11, it would take a while for them to get new people on board. If it's 60 days, some appointments committee might say, I'll wait till the third meeting to bring this forward, because we have 60 days. Or I don't like them, but I'm not gonna reject it, I gotta wait 60 days and let them have beyond the committee, but I don't want to put them, I don't want to have to vote on it. That could happen. 45 days kind of makes the council act. Now, in the case of the summer, we'd have to have a special meeting. Or, let's say they're not controversial candidates. So what if they're appointed after 45 days?
Then definitely.
Right, so we have options. If we do it, I don't have a problem with changing it was filed with the clerk of the council to when submitted to council committee. In other words, that would be the first time it's on the agenda. So Counselor Denham, what do you think of that? Because that, in the case of the June meeting that she just brought up, it would not start the timing until the July meeting. And then the council has 45 days from that point to deal with it, which is fair. I like it, I like, that's the only change, I think I'm agreeing to. I also feel, I was gonna say, if we kept this at 60, we send this to the mayor, she probably won't agree with it. And you know, in a charter change, she has to agree, you have to agree with her, it doesn't even matter. So I would like to keep, change that language.
Say to referral to committee, upon referrals to committee. It's referred to.
Upon referral?
It is set.
So if I do that, I don't know where they have cross out in here. I'll just, I can change it when I.
Yeah, the wording is great, but.
What I do, closed appointment.
Is referred to committee.
Give it to Barbara, Barbara will do.
On the date which notices the appointment is referred to committee.
Yeah, see, it tells me the same reference, see? You should work for Microsoft, see?
Something like that.
To the appointments committee, sure, should I say appointments committee?
No, to the committee.
To committee, I don't want to say the committee, it's only one. So we're gonna change that and take and strike this. They're gonna have strikeout in Google Docs, but I'll do it. And we're not gonna do, well, I'm gonna, do we have an obligation, Counselor Denham? No, we're just, we don't have any obligation, I was gonna say, let's bring Owen in and have him argue. I think we should just bring it to the council, but this is the change we want. And I'll make a note of it. So not 60 days, we're gonna delete that and keep it for 45 days.
And I will say.
And I gotta say, can I ask a question? Counselor Riley say anything about this?
I think he was in favor, I think he said the letter.
He sent the letter.
I think they were, because they intend, and I think changing their language, it would probably intend of what.
Changing the language of when the dates start.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
I think that will help, because I think lots of times, I mean, I'll get an appointment and it'll be two years, two days, two weeks old.
Two years, wow, we're slow.
Yeah, two weeks old, even before it gets to the council. If I get it right after the meeting, and that's a problem.
Okay, then I feel that this doesn't have to go to the city attorney, because it's just a minor change. So I'm gonna bring this forward to the, well, I'm gonna send it to the mayor, if you agree with this, because without the mayor.
She's a no.
All right, so that one's done. I didn't see, before we go to 39, I want to bring up mayor compensation. We all felt that this was okay, and I just want to make sure it's okay, so I can send it to the mayor.
This is not 39, this is.
No, 31, yes, I apologize, I jumped to 31. The salary adopted from the mayor be spread out over four-year term. Barbara, I'm gonna send this to you, maybe you could come up with better language at the end here, but this is.
What are you doing?
Remember how we changed the language?
Yeah.
It wasn't in the charter, the city attorney. One of the reasons I change, make charters specific, is I just don't feel that the city attorney should be the one making decisions that affect the community, like what happens if there's a vacancy in the mayor right now. I would like it to be definitive. He did allow us to incrementally pay the mayor over four years. This is an attempt to do that.
Why can't it just be, you're saying it's by ordinance, and the ordinance determines how it's paid out. Why do you have to say it here? If you're referring back to the ordinance, the ordinance spells out the increases, then why do you have to say it like this? What's the reason? Because this says by ordinance, and if the ordinance is specific, then I don't rely.
Well.
You don't have, you can do however.
If it's not in the charter, if it's not in the charter, can someone argue against it?
No.
I don't disagree.
Being done by ordinance, shall by ordinance establish, you know, salary? And if you want to set it up as.
Well, the city attorney said we can do it, so nothing against it. And it was at the time, I think it was JP who said we should, we should add it to the charter. But I hear, I hear Barbara, so I think both of us. We don't need it.
I don't like to spread out.
I don't like spreading out here, I want to say incrementally.
You're already saying staggered amounts can be dictated by the ordinance. Well, then why do you have to put it in here if you're allowing it to be changed by ordinance? And the acting mayor's thing, I mean, I think that's spelled out in here.
And I agree, I agree with her, because they say the city council shall by ordinance. And we create the ordinance ways.
Right, and the city attorney said, yeah, you can do that.
I would, I would, I wouldn't do anything.
All right, let's not do it.
I agree with Barbara. I agree with Counselor.
I guess the first committee should.
So what you would do then, if you want, you would kick that off entirely? Keep it up to this.
I make a motion not to change 31 as presented by the chair of the. That was a motion, Counselor Denham.
Second.
On my favor.
And you have the discussion.
It's okay, we don't, anyway. Well, I think, you're right, and I think this, and the other reason I did this was placate JP at the time, who felt it should be in the charter, but the specific, but the ordinance allows it, and the city attorney said, yeah.
And I agree with Barbara's statement, is the council shall by ordinance.
Okay, let's go to the big one. Barbara has done a good job of turning this into something we can, oh, that's the wrong one, sorry, hold on.
I can talk about it if you want, or you can start.
Well, what I want to do is go in and tell everybody.
39.
39. Everything you see here in yellow and in green are the changes.
31 is compensation.
31 has been voted down, that's a vote, so. Just to say why I did this, I want it to be very specific, because we relied on the city attorney to give us a fairly lengthy opinion on whether or not city council president can stay on the council while there's in the current charter, 90 days, et cetera. And should the city council president get compensation, he said, yes. It's not in the charter, so someone could argue against that in the public. And we didn't get it. So trying to be more specific and not ambiguous, especially since it's a four-year term. Now, the other thing we looked at, Barbara, was the reason you're here, is can we do this where we're not having too many elections? But Barbara went back and forth with me on this, and she came up with some good ideas, and let's go over them.
Can I, can I start with explaining what I have here, or?
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so first of all, I want to say that I went on to the, I went on to the list of four-year terms in the state, and I pretty much looked up almost all of them to see what they had. And I'll tell you something, there's a lot of different things, but they all kind of come down to similar theme. So a special election, the way I have it is if, and I'm kind of go back to how our charter already is.
39 months.
39 months is, and some places do 42, some days say three years, some. But I picked 39 months, which would be through March of a year.
Which makes, wherever I had seven months, which makes it nine months, which is where the charter is now. It's 15 months and nine months, so I don't have a problem with that. It means city council president becomes the, what did you say, acting?
Well, I changed it to acting.
Acting mayor, we're just gonna use it as one term, we're not gonna have two different terms.
Right.
Nine months, because that.
Then you'd have to, the city council president would have to lose their position on the council. Is the definition of acting mayor and mayor on the charter?
Or you know what, that's a good point.
Because that, that would be problematic in a way that now the city council president will be acting mayor, they don't have all the powers.
No, but if you read, it's all at the end. The counselor serving as acting mayor under A or B shall exercise all the rights and powers of mayor.
He's worried about the definition of acting mayor, it has nothing to do with that.
Well, the, in here, your term is.
You know, I know what I said here, but I want to know if the charter have the definition of mayor and acting mayor.
I don't think it does. I'm looking right here to make sure.
Just asking.
No, I think it's a good question.
Well, mayor, you don't have to define mayor. They're not defined in acting.
No, acting mayor, no, it's not in.
Acting mayor and mayor are undefined, is that what you're saying?
They're not, I'm looking at the charter right now, definitions, so there's nothing in there, so.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, so it means that in the first 39 months, say, in 2024, Nicole resigns. Okay, so what we have to look at is, in 2024, there would have to be a special election. If it happened in 20, or this is the example, if she resigned on May 7th, 20.
Why is wrong?
So she resigned in 2023, before nine months, we'd have to have a special election. But after nine months, it says, if a regular municipal election is to be held within 120 days.
That's here B, I'm looking at you B here.
Well.
Well, that's where you have the nine months, where you're just a separate.
Special election, 139 months, but remember, in between that time, there's a city election. So if that city election is held within 120 days of when she resigns, then you don't have to have a special election. It would only be if it's more than 120 days out, so early in the 39 months, so.
Or, or, and prior to the nine months before the city election, because that's what B does here, where you put here.
And then it goes way down to B, if it recurs in the last nine months of the term for which the mayor is elected, which means from March of '25, so anytime April on, that.
Well, let's say it was this year.
Yes.
This is a standard election, it's not a mayor election. So we had the example of July, June, but Barbara's saying keep it to nine months. And I don't have a problem, because that's what the original charter.
Well, that, that actually is not accurate, so we're, right now, we're in the first 39 months. But we have an election coming up in November. So if, right at this point, right now, our next city election is November 7th. Nine months prior is February 7th of this year. The mayor resigns today, okay, you would not have to have a special election, because you're one, within.
Within the nine months.
You're within 120 days, and what would happen?
No, you're within the nine months, like, what do you mean?
You're within 120 days of the city election.
You just said, you're admiring, you're confusing me. February 7th is the nine-month date.
Right.
So.
Okay, maybe that's all.
February 7th is a nine-month date.
Yep.
You understanding this? You have to go?
Very, let me know about.
Well, here's, Omar, what I wanted to do right now is send this to the city attorney if we agree on this language, can you? Can you please send it personally? Yes, well, I'll just, thank you. All right, because he may say, well, you can't do this, you can't do that, so we go back to square one. Anyway, keep going. Well, it's February 7th is within the nine months of the November 7th election.
Yeah.
In your B scenario.
Right, so, all right, we're in the B scenario. At that point, the city council president or another counselor would become the acting mayor, unless the vacancy occurred really close to the election. Two months, I moved your wording from the end of the sentence to the beginning of the sentence.
I do want to keep this language here, look at, look at up here. Counselor, shall remain as council for the last two months prior to the election.
I don't know if that needs to go in there.
Maybe it doesn't.
No.
Well, what you say down here.
Yep, so.
If the vacancy occurs the last two months of the term for which the mayor was elected.
That means month, no, that means month, November and December. So somebody would have already been elected.
But where did we say?
Maybe there was.
The last two months, you had something about, did you take it out? That the council.
Oh, I moved it up to special election, because it is a special election.
So where is it, right here? If the vacancy was in the, two months prior, before the regular municipal election, the city council shall forthwith. In other words, Connie, if there was a vacancy in the mayor's office in September, because, and we're already past the papers had to be in, we couldn't get a new mayor on the upcoming municipal ballot or the regular mayor election. Well, no, there probably would be pairs on there, but let's go back, the regular, the middle election, the midterm election. Then it has to be 120 days from that point. In other words, if there was a vacancy this September, municipal election is already valid, we can't put a mayor on it. We'd have to have a special election, say, in December, right, or whatever, 120 days.
Well, so this is how I can understand, so, so September, let's say the vacancy comes in May, that election then would just happen at the same time as the regular municipal election, because it is within that nine-month period.
Right.
Right, so if it happened in, let's say, January, you would have a special election?
Right, because it's not the nine-month period, we'd have to have a special election 120 days out.
Yeah, so can I just, can I ask a question? If you had, and I'm, I have no agenda, right? My only reason for my asking this question is because elections are becoming increasingly more expensive. And this is kind of concretized in this document, right? So 10 years from now, elections are gonna be much more expensive than they are today, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So if we're talking nine months, that puts us at.
February.
February, so why wouldn't we just say that, that year, because why would we not so want to waste, so I mean, that's gonna be a huge cost, if we're just talking about a month. If an election or vacancy happens within that calendar year, why would we not just use that opportunity? Interesting that you say that, because Framingham says, if a vacancy in the office of mayor occurs in the first three years of the term, blah, 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 a special.
39 months is ours.
Yep, so they were given it three more months. And then that council election, if a vacancy in the office of mayor occurs in the fourth year, then it would just go to, the counselor would be the mayor and his, the place, his position would be vacant, and.
Well, the longer we do it, and I don't have a problem.
So that's how they.
The longer we do it, if we say, you're only making it 10 months, not a year. In other words, because the years are determined by January 1st inauguration. So if, let's just say it happened in January this year. Then I don't have a problem, it's 10 months, I don't think that's a problem. So if we say 10 months, it's January 7th, not February 7th, Barbara.
Yeah.
And it's in the calendar year that we are going to have an election, I don't have a problem with that. It does help a little bit, but let's say she resigns in December, we have to have that 120.
No, that I totally.
You can't keep pushing it back.
No, I agree, some place years 41 months, years in the last six months, this year's 39 months.
It's all in a matter of people's opinion on how long we want to have the president be the acting mayor.
Yeah, I mean, this one is fairly new, Framingham is, says in the first three years.
That's 36 months, so what they're saying is, if it happened in November, it's 12 months to the election, first three years, it doesn't, first three years is December 31st. So it would be January, so their first three years, because the term of office begins January 1st. So when I say first three years, they mean to the January 1st of the first. So I think 10 months is good, I do 10 months, I don't have a problem with that.
Because I just feel like, I know there was conversation about, you know, they weren't democratic, like, we were all democratically elected, and people voted for people to step up in times of crisis, et cetera, et cetera, and so I think everyone.
So do I have to change this type from 39?
Why don't you just say three years and one year, rather than months?
No, because one year from the point of, from before the election.
So that makes it back to.
Yeah, I think the 39 months has to go to 38 months now.
30, no.
Oh, that's the term, okay, never mind, you're using the word term there. The term of office is starting January 1st.
Correct.
The only place those 10 months is affected is in the council election. Last, I'm gonna say 10.
And the first.
See why I changed up here, Barbara, see what I changed? And right there. I'll send this to you, but I believe that that's what we're.
Okay, so how many months would the top one be?
It stays at 39, because you used the word term, and that's from the.
No, the first 39 months of the term.
The term, okay, that means.
Yep, so it would be March.
It would be March.
Right.
We could say 36 months, which would be January, maybe we should say 36.
I thought, I thought that's what you were doing.
Do you read, Connie, it should be 36 months, because if we say 36 months, it would be January of the final year that we would start, and that would be an election. Okay, let's make it 36 then. I don't have a problem with that.
39 is March.
36 months from the term is January. January 1, January 1, and January 1.
That's to the end of '24.
In this, in this scenario, yeah. My point being, 36 months.
Is three years.
Three years, but it's, the term of office is January 1st. The scenario down below is not 10 months.
Last, no, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. No, one, two, three, four, five, six. And that'd be March. So what are you gonna do and?
No, this doesn't say.
It's very confusing. I think the way that I thought about it, and I wasn't thinking in terms of months, I was just thinking. If the election or if the. If the vacancy happens during the calendar year of. A municipal election. Then then it would not have to be a special. Uh unless it was beyond the date of being able to put it on the ballot, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, that's that two months.
Would it be easier to just say the first three years of the term and then down it'd be the?
Ten months has to be here because. Well, this ten months, what we have to say here prior to the ten months prior to the municipal election. That's what has to be in here, Barbara, to make this line make sense. Regular municipal election.
And again, my again, my rationale for that is. The one for the mayor. No, no, it has to be for the term of which.
The regular municipal election of the term for which the mayor is elected. Last, oh, the last ten months. Oh, it's not. You're right. You're right.
Of the term.
Prior to the mayoral election.
No, no, don't say that.
What do you want, sir?
Of the term of office for which the mayor is.
The last ten months, we have to define what the last ten months prior to the election. We're not saying.
But this is like, we're saying the term, which would be December.
But the last ten months is January to November. That's what I'm trying to. Prior to the election.
Well, depends on if you want that or not.
I do.
Because you have to go all the way to the end of the year.
Well, if you say the ten months, it's March and we don't want to do that. We want to do it as.
I think you should just say year like Framingham does. If it occurs in the fourth year or if it occurs in the first three.
Okay, so then not the last ten months. What do you want? I that I agree with that.
I would, you could just say if the vacancy in the fourth year of the term for which the mayor is elected. Would be the second and fourth? Have to look at just the term that the mayor is elected. But then.
The last, what did you just say? Last year?
The fourth year, in the fourth year.
Sorry.
At that point, you know, I stopped taking off. No, this is very confusing. It's driving me crazy. Fourth year of the. Of the term for which mayors. Yeah, there you go. Okay, now you gotta go back up to the top.
No, that's thirty six months. We change that.
Now make it be the same. I would say the first three years.
Oh, instead of saying months.
Let's be be consistent. The same thing, but at least it's consistent.
Three years. So I'm gonna use the word three too. We have to do that, right?
I'm not sure, but.
I thought we did that on the time of the last time I changed.
So that green, the green that's under the right there, that is also, that's right taken from Framingham.
But this has to be in there. The mayor shall election be sworn in immediately after the special election.
I mean, that would happen anyway. You don't have to state that.
Why is it assumed? Is it assumed under MTO?
It's like if you are elected, you're sworn in.
In a special election. This is all about.
I don't think that's.
What do you think?
I wanna I wanna, this is confusing, so I just want, I I wanna ask a clarifying question. So let's say this is hypothetically. But we'll just use this as an example. So it is an election year. Right, this is an election year. And let's say this is her, and we'll just use Mary LaChapelle. This is her second year. Let's say she left office on. February fourth, uh, probably got a medical situation, blah blah blah, whatever, blah blah blah, and I'm gonna leave. Now that's that would. It would it it wouldn't have to be a special election. We could just carry it through to November. Okay, I just want to make sure that that's I'm understanding. All of that. But if hypothetically she left last year. On December thirty first, we would have to have a special election within a hundred and twenty days.
I'm a little confused. I see what she said.
Have a cutoff at some point.
But wait a minute. Where does it say that? It happens in the first three years. The term of mayor's election with the reason of death.
Okay, so you gotta go down to the forty year one.
If a regular municipal election is to be held within. Where is it?
Sorry, we're in the wrong. No, we're in the, because it seems to me the language is if it's in an off year of an election. That that vacancy becomes, that vacancy happens, it's a hundred and twenty days. If it happens within the calendar year of an election year municipal.
That's what I'm saying. We have to put something in here for that.
Because right now it's just a hundred and twenty days, which is where I'm getting confused. Let's see what, let's see what. Vacancy occurs within first three years, the council shall immediately order a special election to be held not less than ninety or more than a hundred and twenty days. If a regular municipal election is to be held within a hundred and twenty days after the date of vacancy. So that means in February, you would have to have a special election.
But we don't want that.
So you want to be ten months.
What we have to say.
This one, yeah.
This is this this doesn't help us. We don't want a special election in the last ten months prior to the regular municipal election. It's either the first year. Or the third year. But in the second year or the fourth year, we wait. You understand what she said? So how do we say that? I don't think we need.
Yeah, if if you're gonna say if if the vacancy occurred in the first. Like in this. In the second or fourth year.
If the very, if the vacancy occurs, let's just write it down.
Year, then you'd need a special election. But if it occurred in the second.
Or fourth year. Don't worry about the. Especially need not be held.
Right, unless.
All of this can go.
Unless it happened before the cutoff of the whatever it's called, the um. Yeah, you gotta think.
Well, that's down below. We have that.
Okay, yeah, so I just want to make sure that that's.
Fourth year. In other words, read this now. A special election need not be held and the position shall be filled by the voters at the next regular municipal election. I think that makes sense now.
Okay, the top line doesn't anymore though.
If the vacancy of the mayor occurs during the first three years of the term of which mayor is elected by his.
It should be first or third year. Well, that makes sense. First or third year.
Yeah, that makes sense because that's when we need the special election. Oh, I'm doing the wrong thing. Damn it, backspace. Or third year.
Year of the term.
The term of which the mayor is elected. Whether by reason of death, whether any other reason. Yes, that's the only situation we need the one twenty days. This is good. I thank you, Connie. This makes some sense. If the vacancy occurs in the second or fourth year, special election need not be held. Okay, that makes sense because we have a municipal election or we have a regular election.
Right. And and again, in my opinion, this helps to save the city money.
Oh, absolutely. I agree. That's just why we have to have these meetings.
So we're gonna have to think about the.
This occurs the last two months.
That is gonna get a little confusing. The acting mayor thing.
So I have to go back down to where you're saying.
This because.
Where?
Okay, in what year? Like in what situation will the council president only be? A short term appointment and which will, you know, you know what I mean? It's it's gonna be, you've got two different scenarios for the council becoming president. One, they will give up their seat and the other where they won't.
Well, we have to do that. We have to write that in there. I had that in my version. City council president serves as acting mayor. Until the vacancy is filled. See, because this this language has to do with the hundred and twenty days and we don't say that now. During the one hundred and twenty day period, the city council president shall serve as acting mayor until the vacancy is filled. If a vacancy does ever occurs in nine.
Oh, can you say the second and fourth?
Yes. But let me go back up to that. Let me go back up here. During the during. We have one hundred and twenty day. Period. Prior. Election. Does that language make sense?
To a special election.
The city council will serve. That 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 settles that. And we put determines they are at the last period. All right, and then. Where do we have the the acting mayor? We were about to change something. So in the second and fourth year of the term, the mayor is elected, president of city council or other council elected. That make that makes it consistent with everything we've done prior to this. Unless the vacancy occurs the last two months prior to the regular. Creation of the president city council over the. They shall exist in the council's seat. And that's where the village thing we talked about right here. And we don't need this, you said. And we don't need this language. Cause you just, you put it up already. Oh, I don't know. I'll lighten the format. Acting mayor is a candidate for mayor. You put this in and I think that's good.
Yeah, because it clarifies who we're talking about.
The acting mayor is a mayor. Can't put candidate for reelection, which influences voters.
That's in every single one of these.
It's it's the same as other times, like the. When Erica became. Under Bill and she couldn't put candidate for the election in.
But if if the counselor, like when Bill Lynch came in. So there's still something that vacancy occurs the last two months. That means we've just gone by a mayor election and somebody's. Waiting to be elected.
Well, like, yeah, we just had a mayor election.
And and the mayor decides, I don't want to wait until.
Well, in the case of. A vacancy. Right after the mayor's elected. Minute, let's say it's a this year. They should be sworn in right after the election is certified. In other words, in November.
Well, okay.
Because they still have two more years in their term.
So, okay, so say. Say we have an election and um we have a new mayor coming in and Nicole says. I'm done. I'm just leaving on November tenth.
Well, that's different. We also, you told me we didn't need this language up here.
Oh, well, if somebody's elected in a special election, they'll will swear right in right away. They'll start right away.
Well, municipal election, do we need to worry about that? In the case of if Nicole resigned today. We would have an acting mayor. Until November. But then election November seventh. It's certified November fifteenth.
No, the way I read this, because you said that that the counselor does not. I think the counselor serves until the end of the term because otherwise they're gonna be, they're gonna be out of their job. Because you said that because they're.
If the nine months, they can't be on the council for nine months, ten months.
But then, but then you said, well, scroll down, it says.
During a one hundred and twenty day period.
No, like like it, okay, unless the big.
Where are we talking?
You were saying, you you said that the counselor who is.
That's prior, prior. To the election. So because we're gonna have to have a hundred and twenty days.
So I have a I have a question. The counselor shall become the acting mayor for the remainder of the unexpired term. That's what's in here.
Where does it say that?
It's in council election. The counselor shall remain here. For the remainder of the unexpired term. Oh, right there, right above the yellow.
Well, that's that must have been in there from Northampton, so we have to get rid of that. It can't be an expired term because.
Because that's when the base, because they they will have given up their council spot at that point. And so is it fair that they they lose everything? I mean, that's what, that's why I thought you.
No, I I think that's very confusing because we just have an election like again. Just because we have names. Omar is the acting mayor. Omar resigns. We have a new mayor election this November. It's midterm. That person's there. The council president doesn't get to be acting mayor for the rest of the two years. So that that's wrong. We can't have this language.
But then, but then, all right, let's switch what. Because then the poor counselor who decided to become mayor is nothing.
Well, but they're they're mayor for nine months. They may run, they may not.
Run again.
But that's the same as, let's talk about, there's a scenario where. In our own government and and uh. If the Speaker of the House becomes the president, they must resign as Speaker of the House. Until the next election. So let's say it happened then, the final year, there's an election coming up November and Biden dies. And then Kamala Harris isn't able to do it. Not help us McCarthy be president. Sorry, I didn't say that. So this has to change.
That in the now or? Okay, here's here's what Framingham says. Okay, A is the special election, okay? A person elected under subsection A shall serve for the balance of, okay, that's the person who wins.
Shall become the acting mayor for the remainder of the unexpired term. That's wrong. Because it suggests that they're acting mayor for the.
This that's a special election. So that means the person is gonna serve. Okay, so.
No, that's not what it says here, Barbara. What are you reading this?
A person chosen under subsection B, which is the council election, shall serve until the next regular municipal election. At which time the person elected to fill the, okay.
That's what we need.
That's what we need. Shall serve. Okay, at which time the person elected to fill the office for the ensuing.
The president of the council or the counselor elected by the council according to subsection A shall serve. Shall serve until the, you said it. Just read it. Read it out.
A person chosen under subsection whatever shall serve until the next regular. Municipal election.
Just be slow. Regular municipal.
Election at which. The person. Elected to fill the office. For the ensuing. E N. I N G term of office. There's a, take that I out.
What did I do? I'm sorry. I can't.
That's okay, I was just letting you know.
Ensuing term.
Of office.
Of office.
Shall serve. In addition.
Wait a minute, shall serve the next regular municipal time.
Shall serve comma, but you've got to. In addition, comma. For the balance of. The then. Then, I'm just reading it, present term.
The balance. Of the.
Then. And balance. Present term, and balance has one L.
Sorry?
Balance has one L.
Well, you know. This is why, so the rest of this, we don't need. This we don't need. And this we don't need. We do need the unless part. Once the vacancy occurs, once the last two months regular municipal election upon application of the council.
So it basically means that the person who's, the counselor who's, who's doing this has to understand that as soon as the election is held, they're out. They're not a counselor, and they're not a mayor, they're done. Mm-hmm, unless they run, unless they run.
They could run.
They could, for council again, well.
Here's the thing, they couldn't, no.
They would be out, then they'd be done. Right, so, so, so if I understand what you're saying, is I'm the acting mayor. Yeah. I'm the acting mayor, and I don't wanna be mayor. I, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm elected for another term, which starts in January, on January first, but at the time of that person being sworn in, I am no longer a counselor for those.
Two months.
Two months.
So what?
Okay.
But they can run for office.
But they can run for office, yeah, right, they could even run for mayor, they could run for mayor.
Because right here, it says it, you did hear, last two months prior upon the call of the president of the city council, council elected to serve as acting mayor under the section of vacancy challenges in the council seat.
Mm-hmm.
We talked about that, they will be compensated, and they have the powers.
There was one, so I, can I ask another question?
No.
So, I'm the acting, oh, but that would have been filled, because they had to take that.
The acting mayor within a hundred and twenty days, the council president determines they are under the.
That's just.
The active mayor shall remain as a member of the council, this is important, during the one hundred and twenty day period.
Right.
But shall only vote on council measures as they are, in the event of a tie, during this period, the vice president shall serve as acting president, which we added last time.
Yeah.
A person serving as acting mayor under the subsection shall not be subject to the restrictions of Article Three, Section Three dash one A, which is, I have to give up my job.
Yeah, so go up, scroll up, because there's one section, this, this one, if a vacancy occurs in the two months before a regular election.
That's what we just talked about.
Well, that's, that one is now confusing to me.
No, because this is, this is ordered, this is under special election, remember that scenario? We can't have a new ballot put in, we have two months left before the election, we have to order a one hundred and twenty day special election for the mayor. So if it happened in September, four months, September, October, November, December, there has to be election in December, which has happened in municipalities, you have an election November, but during that one hundred and twenty day period, somebody's getting nomination papers and running for mayor.
Mm-hmm.
But that's only occurs if it happens in September and October, or prior to before regular, we say two months, is that enough time? When do you turn in nomination?
Well, this year's September nineteen.
So September, so September, October, so we're okay, that makes sense, right?
So the vacancy, is that right, for the, so the vacancy, if they, depending on when the, it would be the balance of the term.
Yes.
It would be the balance.
Yeah, because it's still, so we don't need, or you wrote that, is this correct? Yeah. I think it is. I think this is ready to go, I wanna send it to the city attorney.
Look at it, let's, let's make sure we look at it, because it's very, it's very confusing, and I think it.
I, I think we've made it a lot cleaner, though, we really got.
I think it's worth looking at it tomorrow, you know, just in your head, because better make sure that it all.
Well, Barbara, I am worried about you, you looked at this five times, I got a new version.
I know.
Like, every time you email me, I like this.
Because, it's because of.
Yeah, but let's, let's forget that stuff, let's look at what we've written here.
All right, let's go back.
And see if there's a hole in it, I don't think, if the vacancy of mayor occurs the first or third year, this is a great change we made of the term.
For example, that would have meant like, um.
Last January.
Twenty twenty-two.
Uh-huh.
Or.
Or twenty twenty-four.
Or twenty twenty-four.
Mm-hmm, or reason of death, or order a special election to be held within one hundred and twenty days following the date of the vacancy is created, to fill the vacancy of the balance, we did a hundred and twenty days, by the way.
Yeah.
If there was a death, we didn't wanna jump onto an election in ninety days, that's why we kept it at one twenty, by the way.
So the first and third year would be off, that would be even years, it'd be like, off, off, signature, okay.
And expired to pursue to Article Seven of the Charter, I put that in because Article Seven dictates elections.
Right.
Ranked choice voting.
Right. Mm-hmm.
If the vacancy occurs in the second or fourth year, a special election need not be held, and the position shall be filled by the voters, so that's clear to me, that's not confusing.
Yeah, I agree.
If the vacancy occurs within the two months before the regular municipal election, the city council shall forthwith order a special election within one hundred and twenty days, that's because the ballots are printed, or the nominations are closed?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
So we'd have, we would have, in this case, it'd be in December.
November, yeah, late, yeah.
And, and, to fill such vacancies, the balance of the then unexpired term. The city council president shall serve, unless they determine they are unable to, and our reason for that, Barbara, is the city council president talks to his boss, and the boss says, I can't let you do it.
Right.
Um, because they have to.
That, that also.
Acting mayor is running council during a period, the vice president shall serve Article Three, Section Three Y-A, deals with, do they have to give up their job? Right, if a vacant city office mayor occurs in the second or fourth year of the term for the mayor is elected, the president of the city council or the council shall elect by council according to subsection A shall serve until the next regular municipal election, at which time the person elected to fill the office for the ensuing term of the office shall serve in addition for the balance of the then present term, I hate that, but that's right from Framingham.
Mm-hmm.
For the balance of the then.
I would say, I would say the.
Just put the present term, what's the then for?
I don't know.
But you know what, the city attorney, they are probably putting it. Unless the vacancy occurs the last two months prior to this election.
So, if it does happen in the last two months, then the counselor wouldn't give up this seat, is that correct? That's what you're saying. So, yeah, because they wouldn't have to give up their position, because it's less than that period of time. And if they were elected to the council position, they would then finish that. So, would, would the, the same parameters of voting that we had before apply if this happened, right?
What's your lava, did you?
You know, that they would, they would be able to, they'd stay on the council, and then they would be able to vote in case of a tie.
Yes. This is, you could, you put this in, this is good, this section.
Yeah.
Vacancy occurs last two months prior to term, mayor is elected, the mayor election is sworn off immediately, and shall serve the remainder of the mayor's term under this. Council serving as acting mayor under subsections A and B shall serve the seat of compensation in effect for this mayor, when that was seen council, because there is a charter statement that you cannot get two checks, right? Council serving on this section shall see all the rights and powers of the mayor, because there is a vacancy at the office, if someone took a vacation, there's language in the charter that says, no, we don't have those powers. I think this is good, I think we can send it, I'll send it to Omar. Um, and what I'll do, I'll tell Omar, I feel, we feel, Connie and I feel, this is, there we are. I'd like to send it to the city attorney, because he may have a lot of changes he may, he may be worried about. Just to review today. We don't, we did the appointment one, all we changed in there was when that was going to start, the timing starts. We eliminated the one for compensation for the mayor, we don't need to do that. And this is, this is a lot better than it was.
Yes, I think it's clear.
So, Barbara, you have to promise me, they're not gonna send me another version tomorrow.
But I, but if we send it to him, it should be all clear, with no, none of.
I'm gonna do it, I'm just gonna take it all and put it in.
Look, yeah, let me, um.
This doesn't say save, so I assume, save as Google Docs, I'll save as Google Docs, well, that's why I, I don't lose it.
Just so I can make it look.
You promise you're not gonna make any changes?
I'm not gonna make any changes.
You heard it right here, Connie.
Maybe a, maybe a word or two with it. But I respect Barbara's opinion.
Well, yeah, but I don't wanna have to say, wait a minute.
But it is, it's confusing.
Well, it's always, it's, it's a serious matter, but I love.
I think it's better to be there.
Connie, you're, oh, yeah, but that was just a rough draft, I mean, come on, that's the point.
Just kidding.
Um, let me see, how do I do this?
All right, Barbara, I want you to know, right now, I'm sending this, all these minutes. Oh, okay.
Let me stop sharing.
I was noticing today that our council committees are not following the council rules about the minutes.
Yeah, well, that's good. And why, he's trying to get them to do it. What I wanna do is, is this the document we just, I just wanna see if this is the document we just did. I'm pretty sure it is.
I think I have to send you, I like the first and third and the second and the fourth year, I think that makes it clearer. Cleaner, you know, when these.
So what I'm gonna do here, Barb? Share. Loading, Omar, Barbara LaBombar, you should have this down.
Great.
And I want you to send it back to me, it's not a Google Doc, but I'm, and I'll just confirm it, and then I'll send it to Omar, okay? And you promised me you're not gonna rewrite entire paragraphs.
I will not rewrite entire paragraphs.
Cause you love doing this stuff, I swear to God.
The more you start looking at that stuff.
I move, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. What time is it? Wait, what's today's date, today's night, oh, no, these are, don't forget to stop the recording.